Session for Monday, May 23rd at 4:00 PM. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any today?
None registered today.
Thank you. I'll move us on to items for presentation and discussion, which is our continued review of our 2023 operating budget. Melanie, do you want to start with a few things?
Thank you. So I know we have a laundry list of things to get through today and an entire room full of people, which is great. Actually, our main focus at the top of our list today is our Community Service Fund and all of the community agencies that are asking or have some funding requests for 2023. So everybody is listed on here, however, not everybody necessarily has a presentation for you. So some of them might certainly only just be available for questions unless you have, unless you'd like to hear from each one of them individually. So we do have somebody, I believe, that can answer questions from any one of the agencies. And then we do have a new one for this year that's also listed on here for the blessing boxes. One other item that I mentioned to the mayor right before this is that we might attempt to move the library up in front of our other city funds, in front of the electric and the stormwater fund, if you so choose. That way, we can just keep moving through those agency presentations for you. So the Community Service Fund is a fund that is, does offer opportunities for these agencies to request funding from you to promote those activities in the community that can better the community and is therefore the enjoyment of all. And it's funded by a portion from a transfer from each one of the general water, wastewater and electric funds. All contribute to the funding for this. And I believe that your first summary page in your packet shows just an overview of all of the requests for this year. There isn't a whole lot of difference there from the previous years, but it does give you an overview. And then within your packet is also a summary page in front of what each agency has prepared for you. In addition, this year, they had an actual standard application, so you should see some consistencies throughout with their requests for you. And so they were asked to provide that. But then also, you might see from some of the agencies that they provided financials or audits or those types of things, but that doesn't apply to everyone. So not, you won't find that for every single agency that's in there. Only those that have been established that way. So if you have questions of me throughout, I'm happy to help answer, but otherwise, it's easy to just run through the list.
All right. Thank you. Let's start with Prairie Falls Animal Shelter with Vanessa Cowie. Good afternoon, Vanessa.
Hi, everyone.
All right. Can you go over a little bit about your budget request here?
Yes, we have, thanks for having me. We have made a lot of efforts to reduce our budget so that there's not such a big gap between our municipal funding and then what it costs to run Prairie Falls. So I think what's really important to look at is on the second page of my written summary that has the cost of housing for the city of Ottawa. We have made huge strides in reducing the length of stay, the cost per care for animal. And so I think that's, that we're going in the right direction. So I think that then it takes the pressure off of our municipal partners to kind of help us subsidize a lot of these programs. So we are asking for a small increase. That represents 4% of what we're currently receiving. We have added some programs. We've added some vaccine clinics. So we now are providing free vaccination clinics to the public in an effort to reduce disease transfer in the community, and it's focused on the needy. So people who usually kind of afford a vet visit for their pets. And we've been doing rabies, December parvo, Bordatella and microchips at those events. And we've done two this year, and we will continue to do those.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Vanessa on her budget?
Well, Vanessa, I know you do work hard toward getting some voluntary help and fundraising around the community. So I compliment you on keeping that going. And I think your request is very modest and respectful. I think that 4% doesn't sound bad to me at all from what I see. So we certainly don't want a municipal-run animal shelter that would limit us with very much what we could do. We can't raise money as a municipality for that fundraisers, but I think you're doing a good job combining all these funds and keep it going. I think, are you on the?
I am.
Okay. I don't get it.
I didn't want to jump ahead of you there.
No, no, go ahead.
One question on the grants. For 2021, was there a specific grant or anything COVID-related possibly? Since it went from 269,000 to estimated at 50,000?
Yeah, so we did receive one big large grant in the amount of 250,000 in November of 2021. And that is to do some facility remodels. It doesn't subsidize our operating expenses or anything, payroll, anything like that. It is to make the building more efficient so that the cost per animal decreases. And then every donated dollar and every government dollar goes further. And that's been really the focus of our whole organization over the last 12 months is that Prairie Falls is a little bit too expensive to run and the funds that we operate on are limited. So we're trying to make each one go a little bit further. And we have spent half of the 250,000 so far. And we're already seeing a lot of savings in utilities, staff time, chemical consumption, a lot of that stuff. So it's working.
Commissioners, any other questions for Vanessa? Vanessa, this is a, you have other municipal partners on here for what your revenues are on that. What other partners does that include?
So we have Franklin County. We have the city of Welsville, and we have Miami County and the city of Kimono.
And what were you asking for from the county?
So the county currently funds us, I think, in the amount of 40,700. I asked for an increase earlier this year to be very similar to what city of Ottawa pays because the expense is very similar for us. And I haven't heard back yet on what the funding will be for 2023, but they have consistently not increased their funding for the last five years.
So you asked for a similar of the 624, kind of like what you're asking for from us?
Yeah, in a smaller increment, but I'm really trying to get those numbers to be very similar just because when I run the numbers, the cost is very similar for us. As far as the volume of animals, the time they spend with us, what we spend caring for them is comparable.
Commissioners, any other questions for Vanessa? Vanessa, thank you for your time today.
I'm sorry. I forgot one municipal partner is Anderson County. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, Vanessa. We appreciate your time. All right. That'll move us on to the mayor's Christmas tree.
Mayor?
Yes.
I should have mentioned. So this is simply a placeholder in our budget. And this is for, in case any of those donations do come in, it gives us the budget authority to be able to distribute those in that same year. So there really isn't a request for this. It is just a placeholder.
Great. Thank you.
Pressure's on you to get donations.
Anybody here want to donate? I'm working. I'm working. All right. That'll move us on to the Veterans Day support with Sherri Lynn and Ray Schumay. Come on up. How are you?
Well, mighty fine.
Good.
If I get my money.
Yeah, ask us in a few minutes, right? Tell us a little bit about your request.
Well, this year, we're going to do some, first of all, let me ask you a question. Are you all familiar with the Veterans Day, what we do here? The parade, the displays and so on and the like. So every year, we try to increase a little bit more to it. We've got some wild ideas that I don't know, it'll probably take years to accomplish. That is banners to put down Main Street with a picture of every military person that has died, which is 200 and some odd there, and a little bit of information about it. Instead of right now, we just got crosses down into the city park there with their names on it. So we thought we, some way we can emphasize a little bit more, we would do something like that. But we looked into the cost of it. The cost of that is going to be, if we do every fall, 205, it's going to be around over $50,000. So I think that's going to be a little dragged out there, but can we still want to start with it on there? Some of other expenses we've got is like repair of the flags. We've got about 500 flags. We like to, you know, repair some of them because they get damaged. And we also want to increase that number of flags because what I like to do is not only have the flags down at the city park, I like to take those flags and move them all out Main Street to 15th Street. So when people come in, they see nothing but a row of flags. And then when they get to the park, then the park display there. So I'm pushing, to be honest with you, I'm pushing for one of the best displays in a five-state area. A lot of people don't do a whole lot of Veterans Day. They stick a little flag here, a little flag there. But I think these people need more recognition than that. Also, I had a call right after the event last year, and this lady says, how come there wasn't more military stuff in there? Because it's Veterans Day. And I thought, you know, she's really got a point. There isn't that much military. So we're going to reach out to Leavenworth and Fort Riley to see what else they can provide for us to make it a better event and honoring the military people. We've also working on, I think it's really a neat deal, a movie screen down in the park. And a library has helped us a great deal on this here. And we're going to have a videotape shooting on this screen. And it's going to show every picture of every soldier that's in that park and a little bit of information about it. And then it'll flick again to the next screen, to the next screen, and the next screen. It's a very time-consuming project to do this, but the library has stepped up and said, we definitely have people in there. Of course, we got maintenance on the crosses. The names are starting to chip off. We need names on this hang on there. We, last year, we had a float, a submarine float come in, and we'd like to more or less display that. But, and there's a lot of those things out there. And, but some of these people say, hey, we need finances to come down. And we're going to be hit even more this year because of the gas expenses and so on and the like. So they're going to say, we need a little more or we need some money to help out. And so this is going to be another expense on us for the helicopter, Vietnam helicopter. A person's got that on a float. I'd love to have that down here. Vietnam POW cage where it's on a float and some prisoners inside the cage. That's something else I'd like very much to try to work on there. Painting the road signs, you've all noticed I've scattered Ottawa pretty heavy with the road signs. They're getting a little bit staggered, and we're going to have to probably repaint every one of them this year. And that's going to be kind of expensive on a part of here. You have any questions so far? Oh, yeah. One other thing. I thought if the city would be real generous and donate enough money, possibly you could pick up a tank, a Russian tank, low mod is on.
It's the shipping.
But that'd be something we need.
Didn't note that in your request. Thank you for the verbal.
But I just thought, you know, maybe out of curiosity.
Well, don't purple light. Ray, how many years you been doing this? You've been doing this 20 years now?
20 years, about 20 years. And every year, we try to increase it and increase it and increase it.
You've always done a great job.
It's always a stunning visual and a great reminder of us all, for us all. And really, $1,000 is a small amount that the city can help to contribute to keep this going on.
Thank you. I'm a firm believer that this is one of the no brainers, quite honestly. Absolutely.
On this estimated 4,000, are there other funding sources outside of the city?
The city gives us 1,000. The county gives us 1,000. And we have numerous other individuals step in and help on the funding. We do get more funding than just the city of Ottawa.
Any other questions?
Great job.
No questions here. But I've got 30 minutes scheduled.
30 minutes?
I didn't bring my sleeping bag.
You did great. You didn't even need 30 minutes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Appreciate it.
You all take it.
You too. That'll move us on to city van support. Hello.
Hello. Oh, proud of you. I remember the last time we had to come, we were in the room next door. A lot more room in there.
Let's hear a little bit about the request you have here.
It's basically the same. We're just asking for a little more of example for the director salary. That has not been increased since we asked in 2015, increased a little bit, 1,500 to 1,900. Just the cost of living for one band. Mark, we definitely put a lot of time in preparing the music and of course directing. And, you know, there are only two people that get paid basically, a director in the library and then pay a little amount that we share for the students who help us with the loading. So others are just slight increments, just expecting increase. I know advertising is costing a little more than in the past. And since we had, the city asked us to become a nonprofit corporation, we had no idea there were fees to be paid every year. So it's been $80, but I put down a one hundred just in case that were to increase. I have no idea about that. Glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
It's a summer staple.
For sure. For sure. I don't think we have any questions for you.
Okay.
Short sweet.
See, I told you not to worry as we were walking in.
Hopefully to start on May 31, the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
All right.
Coming to all the happening fast.
Thank you. That'll move us on to Franklin County Development Council, Paul Bean. Good afternoon, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I talked to Melanie today, but I know you'd already gotten the packet. I do not, am not asking for any increase. Just want to go with the same amount of 64,375 that we've done the last several years. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about FCDC. I know you get more information the more.
Commissioners, any questions for Paul? Crickets over here, I guess. Paul, thank you. Thank you. On to Ottawa fireworks.
Keep all of these budgets moving as fast. I'm telling you, just go.
What happened in the first set of people that just slowed us down for hours? Golly. We'll move on to Ottawa fireworks. Hello.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
We are asking for a slight increase this year. The Ottawa Fireworks Committee is a subcommittee of the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, and we do put on the fireworks display each year. The cost of fireworks has grown substantially this year. Not only the cost of the fireworks, but the transportation from China to the United States has more than doubled. And so our increase this year was a little close to $2,000. So we're just asking for a little bit more from the city. We do receive $1,000 from the county on this, and then the rest of the funds we fundraise through some raffles and a 5K raise and a couple of different things and ask for sponsorships as well.
Commissioners, any questions on this one?
I guess we shouldn't be surprised by the increase or the delays.
Last year's container cost $18,000 to get to the U.S. This year is 40,000. So yeah. Yeah. But it's going to be a great display this year.
There you go. It's exciting. Thank you. Thank you. And if I may, if anybody's following along on the agenda, I did skip over Ottawa Main Street Association. And the reason being is because our representative from the commission is sick today and then Cal was out of town, correct? Yeah, so that's why we're skipping over Main Street at this point. We're going to put it on for next Monday's agenda. So.
If I may.
Yes.
I would just like to comment. I noticed there was a letter of recommendation from the Chamber in that was dated 2019. Not saying that support has gone away, but we would have to revisit it because we're actually visiting with a couple of other community organizations about Lake City Square and providing stuff there. So I don't want to say that we're not supporting it. It's not, I'm not rescinding that letter. But it is, judge it as a two-year-old letter, and it would have to be revisited by the board again before it may occur.
Appreciate that, John. All right. Let's move on to the Elizabeth Layton Center. Leslie, I believe, is on soon. Hello, Leslie. How are you?
Hello, Mayor Crowley. I'm well, Commissioners. Thank you for having me.
Let's hear about the request that you have.
Excellent. Elizabeth Layton Center appreciates a longstanding partnership with the city of Ottawa. In the coming year, our request is for $6,890. And as you might note in the application this year, we would carefully attribute that to three main areas. All of the areas would help us to fund the staff time that ELC invests in engaging in various partnership opportunities with the city of Ottawa on behalf of our community. So those opportunities would include our participation in the CIT Council of Franklin County. Also, the really exciting new development of our crisis co-responder position with Ottawa Police Department. And finally, our participation in the Ottawa Homeless Coalition that endeavors to help us find solutions to better serve those who are living precariously housed or in homelessness. So I'll pause there for a second. I'd be very happy to answer any detailed questions or provide you with any other data or information regarding our service delivery.
Commissioners, any questions for Leslie?
Leslie, I guess we're semi-post COVID. Are you still seeing enough services or did you see more during that time than you are this year? How's that compare?
Yeah, Commissioner, I appreciate that question. I have noticed an increase in demand of services, particularly over this past year. In our 2021 annual report, we ended with a service to about 3,600 unique individuals in calendar year 2021. That did not quite register as high as we had served in 2019, but our early data this calendar year would suggest to me that we're probably going to hit that 2019 mark before the end of 2022. We definitely just hear stories ongoing about the need for services. And I think a better appreciation by all of our citizens of the importance of getting early and ongoing mental health treatment when needed.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Did you have more, Leslie?
I'm sorry, sir.
Did you have more?
Nothing else to add unless you'd like me to address any other areas or respond to any particular questions tonight.
Who is your representative for the homeless coalition?
Megan Darling is our Director of Community Support Services. Dr. Darling has been the primary person who's been attending the monthly coalition meetings. I believe she also has tagged Nathan Gillespie on at least one occasion to help serve that committee as well.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Leslie on her budget? I don't believe we do. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your engagement tonight.
Absolutely. That will move us on to the blessing boxes with Julie Riggins. Come on up.
I've got Anna Bricker and Nathan Gillespie with us today. Can we use this chair?
Yeah.
You can use it. You can sit there as long as you want. You want to sit the rest of the meeting? Come on down. Just sit. We're cool with that.
You don't expect Leslie to be on the meeting. I'm not double dipping, I promise.
Hello, who wants to go?
I said you were a part of the homeless coalition.
I am, but I'm. I'm on the blessing, I'm on the homeless coalition. As Eric knows, I represent the blessing box.
We understand. We're all involved in a lot of things too. So we understand completely.
So we are currently looking for a physical space because right now, we are operating out of my store. When it comes to things like American Eagle donated close to 200 meals last week, and we pass them out Thursday, Friday and Saturday, all of them. And, you know, it was obviously intended for those in need. And I believe that we, that I would say majority of the people that came in were people that were in need. So what we are trying to do is set up a warming slash cooling station for those that are unhoused, where in the summertime, they can come in, they can get a drink of water, they can cool off. And then in the wintertime, obviously, come in, get a cup of coffee, warm up as needed. But then that would also serve as a place for us to store food that has been donated, like large portions of food that has been donated. We are in contact with harvesters. Harvesters, we have to have a physical location. It can't be a residential location, and I completely understand that because I don't want all that stuff in my garage. But my store is, it's a rather large store, but there is not a lot of space for blessing box items. So if you have any questions, we, and it is hard for me to say, given you an exact number on how many people we have served. I would estimate about 1,000 people a year that come to the boxes. We have boxes across town. We were having some problems with the box behind our store where it was, someone was opening packages of spaghetti, you know? So I put a camera up there and only looked at it when there was a problem. And in a 24-hour period, I counted 40 either individuals or families, couples. Now, you know, so if it was two people coming, I only counted it as one in 24 hours. And that was just the box behind our store. And right now, our donations have been a lot lower. We've been doing fundraisers, but cash donations have been a lot lower this year. And I think it's the economy has really.
You're still seeing a need though, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Tell us a little about how you got started with this and how many actual boxes do we have around now?
So Anna came to me. American Eagle wanted to put a box up down on the corner at the 5th Street. And so her and I discussed, and that's really how it started. Right now, we have seven boxes up. And those boxes, some of them are where, you know, the church decided they wanted to put one up and join us. But everything that comes into my store, like in bulk, gets distributed out to all the boxes, not just the one behind my store. So. We also have some plants for fresh produce on our corner as well, but it's a food thing. Yes.
And then as far like the need, even at ELC, I work, Megan's my boss. We tell the adults that we serve there, like, we take them to blessing boxes frequently, talking about the blessing box locations and to make sure that people know where they're at. So we're definitely seeing, even calling DCF whenever individuals need like emergency food or emergency food stamps. Even DCF is shouting out, hey, have you checked the blessing boxes? So it's definitely like they know about it. It's pretty cool for them to be distributing that information too.
I mean, it is encouraging to see the usage. I drive down Main Street and I'll see someone getting some things out of there. Sad statement, but I'm glad they're there for the people that need them. So it's kind of a.
Yes. So what we are looking at, there's a couple of spots that we have inquired about. We want to stay on the north side of town. My personal preference would not be to go anywhere past 3rd Street because I feel like the north side of town is really the neighborhoods that need the most help. And, you know, and if people. And, you know, and if people came in, like I said, we have, there's a lady from Kansas City that comes down, her daughter lives in Ottawa, and she brings large bulk items to us from another food pantry that doesn't need it or doesn't use it, or, you know.
So is there a warming cooling station? Is that, describe what that would look like, or how would that?
So it would just, you know, I would, I, in my head, and, you know, my board might have other ideas, but I'm thinking, you know, just maybe a love seat, coffee maker, a microwave, obviously, a refrigerator to keep water in, things like that, a public restroom, because I know that that's a big, excuse me, a big problem, so they would be able to use a restroom. Obviously, we would not have any loitering, we don't want just loitering and hanging out, and we would work with the police department to make sure that nothing crazy is going on.
Tell me about your board, and how many paid staff do you have that are working?
We have zero paid staff. Our board is Anna, Nathan, Brett, and Miranda Stanslow, Kelsey Eads, and Skylar Barker.
Do you count the half of his home, Stanslow, too?
She comes to the meetings sometimes, so.
She's a good fundraiser. She can't sign.
So that is our current board, and we all just do it as a volunteer.
Julie, just for clarification purposes, the Blessing Box Foundation has an address of Pomona, Kansas. And I know that, but just for clarification purpose, since it's Ottawa tax dollars, we want to make sure that this foundation will be based in and is based out of Ottawa, correct?
That is correct. The Pomona address is my home address because I had to push something down.
And I assume that, I just didn't want somebody to be reading this and think, whoa, wait a minute, this is city tax dollars, why are we funding something that's not involved?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would change the address once we got a physical location. I just didn't want to put my store address down because then that starts to blur the lines.
And I'm glad to see that some of the things that you're looking at aren't entirely based on the blessing box themselves. And what I mean by that is, when I first heard about, you know, the request for funding, I was a little concerned, and what I didn't want it to turn into is that the city, that the taxpayers, in a sense, the city is funding the blessing boxes. I like the way it's set up now. You guys did a great job with folks actually bringing stuff down there and putting them in for, you know, for people to come and take. I didn't want it to be, I don't need to do it now, you know, the city's funding it, so, you know, that'll take care of it. So that's, I'm glad to hear that it's for, you know, a building so you can actually, you know, grow, you know, grow it, no pun intended.
Right.
Food and everything, so. But yeah, I was excited to see that because, like I said, I just didn't want it to turn into that, so.
Yeah, we don't, we just, you know, we've got several opportunities to get more food from places like Kansas City, but we have no place to store.
Right.
So, you know, if the city has an empty room, we would take that as well, you know? We're open to whatever we can do to help the community.
Just for clarification, the request is for 5,000, right?
That is correct.
Okay, on the application, there's an extra zero in there, so I didn't want to.
No, we're not asking.
It's okay.
Commissioners, any other questions for Julie, Anna, or Nathan? You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll move us on to the library. Terry, come on up. I see you. I said Terry, but then, you know, there's three or four others up here if you.
Mayor, would you mind if I start off the conversation?
Please do.
So our process is a little bit different this year for the presentation from the library. Typically, Terry and company would do, give you a presentation once we actually already had the assessed valuation and knew what the mill levy would be that they'd be presenting to you. And that's not the case this year because we really front-loaded the whole budget process so that you had all of the information early on. We get our assessed valuation in June, and in July, we are somewhat rushed to make a decision on our maximum mill levy or mill rate because of the timeline that's been put in place by the state of Kansas. So instead of pushing this off into July, so we had adequate time to get a presentation and any questions to answer, we did move it up. But it does present a challenge, both for Terry and her group as well as you, because you're not going to have a good look tonight at what the actual mill rate might be and/or the amount of adverum taxes coming in, or even the motor vehicle taxes, because we don't have those estimates yet either. So really, the conversation is more about their needs and very similar to what you've heard from all of your other, both agencies and also your groups internally, and then we'll have to come back in July with what that equates to after we get the rest of the story from the county. So that, just to give you a little bit of a precursor, so any numbers that are plugged in there, just like we presented to you for city auditorium or the debt service fund, they're just a plug figure for now as far as adverum taxes go. The rest should be what their needs and wants are. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Okay, our memo starts out with our new logo for our 150th anniversary. Ottawa Library has been in existence in the city of Ottawa for 150 years, and we're in existence because the city of Ottawa supports us. So, and that's from the beginning, and they supported us getting funds from Andrew Carnegie to build our library at the city park, and by giving us that land, that was one of Carnegie's requirements on giving us money to build that library. And then in 1996, we moved to this building. And just to point out a few things on the memo, we are a huge partner of the city of Ottawa. We have a huge partnership throughout the community with various organizations. We seek and apply for grants every year. You will not see all of those grants in our budget numbers because we don't know what grants we're going to get and what ones we're not. If we apply for a grant, there's income and there's expense, so it would just offset each other if we did estimate what those grants would be. We accept a lot of donations, and that helps our budget. We utilize volunteers, and we have state requirements to meet in order to qualify for state funds and to qualify for Nichols funds, which is a two-test system where we either have to keep our budget number, dollar amount, the same, or increase it, or keep our mill levy the same, or increase it. And then I also included some of the prime budget requirements for our Nichols accreditation. These are not at all all of them. It's a several-page document that we have to adhere to to be recognized as a major service center to library. With the city of Ottawa, we do have to stick to a 10-mill limit or lower each year. I do meet with the finance director annually, and we have decreased our, our expected uncollected tax estimate for adverum by 2.3% this year, which was suggested last year when we presented the budget. Of course, we're always committed to excellent staffing. Also want to point out that as executive director, when I became interim director in 2011, we opted to not replace the business manager position, which is what I was doing at the time, and we combined those two positions. Had we not done that at that time, we would be well over the 10-mill limit now and would have came to the city commission to increase our mill limit. So, and then I also wanted to point out what capital improvement, what our capital improvement fund consists of, that we do have an endowment fund, and what those funds consist of, and we are lucky enough to have a Friends of the Ottawa library that support our children's summer reading program, our children's team and adult summer reading program. They donate to the Lit Fest every year, and now they're actually in charge of the Lit Fest, and I don't know if you guys know that. They actually took over sponsorship for the Lit Fest in November 2017. This year saw the library staff becoming a major part of planning that. So it was the first year I have attended the Lit Fest, and I was thoroughly impressed with that. And I also always give you pie charts so you can see who our cardholders are. This is cardholders as of May of 2022. We have 12,045, which I think is impressive when you consider that our population is 12,000 and some. So some of those are city cardholders, some of those are county, and some of them are outside of the county. Nichols does require us to allow anybody to get a card at our library, and which is only good business not only for us but for the city. We don't want anybody walking into our library and us refusing service and not being good citizens and welcoming them to our community. So that just points out who our cardholders are. Any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Terry?
Terry, on your memo, it indicates that, are you, will you be adding staff with this budget?
So we added one staff member this year, which was another part-time person to our children's department. And what, the reason for adding that is the responsibility of Franklin County Lit Fest, that definitely involves the children's department, and it does return us to three full-time youth services librarians. We had decreased that to two and a half, and now we're moving that back up to three. And they definitely need a, one of those individuals is also going to start her MLS degree in August, so that will also put extra stress on her. So we felt it was a good time to increase her to have another staff member.
And then a couple lines down there. I know for the 12-year, 10, 12, however many years I've been on city commission, that we've had conversations about Saturdays and Sundays. And it seems like every year we kind of hear the saying, you're going to give consideration. And so we're we act towards moving from consideration to actually have.
So we discussed it as a board, and we looked at what those numbers would be to, to add Saturday hours, which would be just, we're open to one on Saturdays, so it would be increasing those hours to 5:00 p.m. And Sunday hours, 1 to 5, would only be from Labor Day weekend through Memorial Day because we didn't used to be open in the summers on Sundays, nobody comes in the summer on Sundays. And in doing that, we talked about the fact that we are looking at a new building. If we, if we increase those hours now and then open the new building and can't afford those hours and back off on them, then we hate to take them away after we give them to people. So we opted not to do that, and it would cause us to ask you for more money than we're asking for as well.
Right now, you're open Saturday mornings, like from what?
Nine to one.
Nine to one, okay. And then Sunday at all, we're not?
No. And in the timeframe that we have closed, I have received two phone calls asking why we're not open or that we, that somebody stopped by. So there's not a lot of people that are knocking on the door on those days. I do know that when we made the decision to close on Saturday afternoons and Sundays, we tabulated for most of the year to see when we were busy and when we weren't, and those were the hours that we were less busy. And that was back in probably '09, '10, when we weren't getting all of our funding because of the financial situation in the community, so we had to make a cut, and that's where we decided to do it.
And are your summer hours any different? I guess that it's.
They're not.
They're the same, so.
Yeah, they're the same.
Under your capital improvement stuff, you're, you indicated that, I mean, and I'm so glad that you're taking advantage of, and it seems like more or less have maybe been something that's been of an uptick, and I'm so glad when individuals realize the important part that library has paid in their level, and then they have just passed and choose to make that donation to the library. That's certainly encouraging. I'm glad to hear that. It does indicate that statute allows up to 10%, of tax funds annually. 10% of tax funds annually what? I know it's kind of rhetorical.
To be transferred into the capital improvement fund.
Okay, so every year, you're transferring 10% of your funds to a capital improvement?
Not every year, only if there's funds that allow that.
But for the last several budget years?
For the last two, we've been able to do that.
So before that, you were unable to do that?
We were not able to do that. And I think that we paid more attention to that because of the new building, that we're talking about building, because we need some funds to be able to pay for, well, we purchased land, we have done plans for the new building, we have done assessments with a fundraising firm, and the fundraising firm, of course, all costs money. If you don't have to fundraise for the fundraising firm cost, your dollars are ahead.
I didn't know you guys can do Amazon Smile. I might have paid for the new library if I had. I've been donating it to animal shelters, and I need it to be used by you guys now, so that's, that's good to know.
Vanessa heard you.
You can put it on your calendar that every month you could just change it, back and forth, and then no animal nor no book.
Yeah.
Goes on month.
That's a good idea.
Okay, okay, what is Amazon Smile?
It donates a portion of every dollar you spend on Amazon back to somewhat local community a lot of times.
So instead of going into amazon.com to order, you go into Smile, Amazon, to order, and you designate who you want to order.
Pretend like I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
Tell her early, she'll get it.
Terry, do you have a line item on here on what the balance is on the capital improvement fund?
I do not. That will be in my financials, you'll see in June.
So I think there's always a line item you have of maybe a transfer, because I believe it's always 50.
Right.
But it's never, I've never seen a balance.
You do see that on the bottom of my financials that I do monthly. It's on the very bottom that has the balance and all the checking accounts and the.
Okay. I'll look for that there.
Yeah.
Do you know what the increase is for Gmail, since it's no longer free for libraries?
Yeah, this year it was around 2,500, next year is close to 6,000. This year, they gave us a break. It is $14 per person that has a Gmail. So this year, they agreed to do $7 per person, and they're doing that through June of next year, and July it goes to 14. And we checked other options, and they are all about the same.
Everything's more, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we're all used to using Gmail and Google Docs and Google Sheets and. There's a huge, huge advantage that we have there, not yet happen to pay for that, but everybody wants paid.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Terry? Should I add anything?
No. Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
Appreciate it. All right, that'll move us down to the electric request with Dennis Thorpe.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Where are you going to, now? I figured you were going to sit here, too. You can't if you don't want to.
No, I absolutely won't.
Let's see if I can get to that picture.
Their dress or their salt and the final shot.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. So as you know, we're here to talk about the electric utility, which, of which we have both production and distribution. The electric utility revenues come from user fees, and, and they then support the operational expenditures of the, of the, of that utility. Administration, much of our finance department and some areas of other departments are funded out of utility revenues, and our broadband is also funded. And our broadband is also funded out of utility revenues. We've done this a little different this year. You've seen kind of with the water and wastewater presentations that were done, you've kind of seen the approach to this and you've heard the reasons for that. We have, as, as always, done, you know, some, some in-depth review of both revenues and costs. What you are going to see today is, is what we believe are those needs, those things that we need to continue to do to keep up with not only our operational, but, but begin to hit some of those capital projects that have been on the books for a long, long time. These numbers are just really a shadow of what, of the things that need to be done. And you all have seen the CIP lists and, and know what they look like and know how many dollars are involved in those. So I'm not going to expound on that at this point in time. We have picked specific things that we not necessarily want to get completely accomplished, but some things that, that we want to continue to move forward with. Some of them just preliminary steps, some of them other steps that are involved at that point in time. At that, I think I'm going to leave it to the folks that are going to do the presentations, unless you have questions of me. Okay, I'm going to get out of the way and we will start with electric production. Thank you for softening the blow there, dude.
We're well served.
Either way. He's the one beginning to blame here. Commissioner, Mayor, Mr. Neistat, thank you for having us here to present the 2023 electric production budget. My name is Dave Unsaker, I'm the Electric Production Superintendent. Next to me is Assistant Superintendent Rocky Evans. And we came up with this 2023 budget request. One of our electric production goals is to provide a reliable, most effective electrical energy to the city of Ottawa. We've used some of our partners into coming up with the, some of the figures for forecasting the costs of purchased power and such. Camier, y'all know them. Also with power compliance, Donna Ohm, to help us with the RICE Nisha. I'm going to, that's an acronym, I'll explain it one time. It's National Emissions Standards for Hazardous Air Pollutants for Stationary Reciprocating Internal Combustion Engines. RICE Nisha. Electric production budget request, request an increase of $982,000, approximately 9% over the published 2022 budget. Line item 605, purchased power and 606 demand power, they make up over 70% of our total budget. Due to an increase in the Grand River Dam Authority, GRDA, and our WAPA, Western Area Power Administration, we're asking for an increase of $878,000 for purchased power, approximately 15% increase. WAPA is making up for their loss in the winter storm Yuri. GRDA, also they had a unit catch on fire last fall. They are picking up for some of the losses they had to find replacement power to provide for the customers.
So we did provide some upfront money from the, a year ago, didn't we? They're still needing more than
Yeah, that was for the winter storm Yuri.
Right.
And then they had another gas, big cast turbines caught on fire.
And so that was a difference in this thing. Big turbine.
Also with that increase too, I was able to drop the 606 demand power a little over $200,000, or yeah, because of, no, $2 million. Because I moved the transmission fees over to the power, purchased power. That's a variable cost. I'm trying to get at least one line item that is known. And 606 seems to be that, so I was able to move those funds over to that.
So GRDA, is that a for-profit entity or a sake?
No, it's not profit.
It's, it's a non, not for profit? Do they pass it on to?
It's a, it's a state-owned utility for, in Oklahoma.
Any other questions on that? Managed an increase of the machine equipment repair of a $25,000. We spent $52,000 last year. 2021, 22, increased 553 service agreement compliance by $20,000. As for our new Doppler Response Management partners and a new health map outage map to go along. We may have electric contributions, we'd be paying half that. $50,000 to the contractual services, engineering services on the 4160 to the 12-4 conversion. Maintenance on the generators. And we need to set up a new 161 SCADA network that's off of our other SCADA system to make for their compliance. They want all 161 transmission to be alone. And then our fuel oil for generators, an increase of $50,000 due to, of course, fuel cost increase. And because of the winter storm Yuri, we are also trying to maintain going into the winter 90,000 gallons of fuel. That 90,000 gallons will run all over four units at top load for three days to get us some more fuel on hold.
And we ran it for two days last February?
We ran her for pretty much six or seven days.
And it saved us how much?
About $2 million.
We've got enough storage capacity for this, not add?
We have a 200,000 gallon tank and we have a 15,000 gallon tank sitting out there. And with 90,000 gallons, the question came up, Richard, can we keep that much in there without it going bad? We run our generators, SPP calls on us enough that we run them and add to it that we're refreshed pretty much regularly. The only personnel request that we have is a part-time seasonal helper from on. Capital purchases, $400,000 for equipment, purchasing and installing new muffler catalyst combination for generator six and seven to maintain our compliance with RICE Nisha ruling. The units are, they're recertified every three years. And last year, Donna Ohm with the power plant compliance, she's done them the last couple of times. And she said, the next time we do them, they will not pass. We have to have a 70% emission reduction on both units. And over 10 years ago, we installed a catalyst in, close to the turbos and found out we cannot run at top load 6 megawatts without causing some damage with back pressure back into our turbos.
We installed them at the time, it was recommended to do that. That's where the experts of the federal government were, and the regulations have changed, dogs.
So we cannot run them. And she's, and I believe her, she's, was out last couple of times.
I was calling it RICE mishap.
Mishap, yeah. You could call it RICE mishap.
You know, my point is, it's not because we haven't done the maintenance, it's not because we haven't taken care of them. We've done everything that the regulation calls for, and this is an instance of where the regulation has changed.
Well, and you always go with the best recommendation. At the time, I was actually power plant superintendent at that point in time. And we looked at a number, we looked at a number of ways to do this with, with the experts in the field. And this was what was recommended to us 10, 12 years ago, whatever that's been, to, to accomplish what we had to, to keep these units viable. And as we have gone through over a period of time, at that point in time, there was no question about what these units would run at top load and not be a problem. We found out that was not completely true, although these units have still been very viable. We could run them very close to top load, just can't quite get there. But they have found that putting, moving these catalysts out into the mufflers themselves are, is a better, better way to do this. Honestly, where we're at with these right now, we were due to do something different anyway. Our mufflers are due to be replaced and it's, it's time. So it actually felt together pretty good, all things considered.
So if they're not in compliance, the units are reduced to emergency use only, which means we buy more from?
We will not be able to help out with, SPP will not call us to run for the integrated market.
Which we sell back?
Yes. Okay, pay us to run it. I'll give you an example, back in September and in half of October, we, well, just September, our EMP one bill was a credit for over $13,000 because we ran most of September for SPP integrated market.
And if we wouldn't have, we would have got a bill, not a credit?
$150,000 to $2,000.
Which would be passed on to the consumer?
Correct.
And then if we were to replace these, what's the lifespan of the new ones?
In fact, we just talked to Donna about that last Thursday. Yeah, if we go stainless steel, she'll go, get about 35 years of them.
And those are the, those are the ones that are quoted here?
Yes, we are, we are stainless steel, yes.
So other than day-to-day, for the, if they're reduced to emergency use, would that winter storm last year have qualified?
Yes.
For that, so if a case like losing power, they can still be able to work, but our day-to-day?
Yes. We had to run for, let's say voltage drop down is dangerously, but we could run to pick that up. It even restricts us to what we can use to keep our units in working order and maintain. You know, they restrict us to what we can do there. And so some of the things that we do now, just to make sure that we can run when we need to, we can't do it if, if we go that way. Any other questions on that? Yeah, also, just like I said, probably some batteries. We've had to replace the Northeast substation batteries this year already, because they failed when they got tested. Southeast are older, and they're coming up due for testing next year. Capital projects. You heard me talk about back on 558, having additional monies to that fund. It's other contractual services, engineering services and such. Capital project, the 4160 to 12-4 conversion. We had a line 11 years ago, back 2011, Circuit 4, underground, went bad on us. And since then, the electric distribution, well, actually then, they have converted it over, moved it around. But coming out of the power plant, Circuit 4 is no longer exists. We've had an engineer come out and he will not test those because when you test them, you're inducing a high voltage power to it. And he's afraid it will do damage to the other circuits that we're testing. He will not change just one set. Says he will not allow his guys to work a lot with the other electric conductor in there that's hot, it all had to be killed. He gave us a recommendation of a bypass that we will set a transformer, two transformers actually. We'll have 12-4 coming out of the substation to Second Street, go through these transformers outside, and then go to the 4160 distribution system. That's why I like the increase in that, so we can get started on an engineering, not only for that project, if that's the most one, but also start looking on what would be the more feasible. Would it go ahead and make more sense to go ahead and put all of our eggs in one basket and just get rid of the 4160 and get it converted over immediately? Which is the optimal, you know, we'd like to see on that.
So for folks who might not understand, what's the reasoning behind the conversion?
Updating. And
All of that equipment is 83 years old now.
Yep. 4160 was in the 40s. Such, we came with the 12-47, started in 1967. And they've been doing a little conversion at the time.
This is a capital project that's been on the books for 20 years, probably. You know, back before my time as director, this has been talked about there. There has been some study done, a study that needs to be updated at this point in time. As Dave said, there has been some conversion where we can over a period of time. But at some point, we had no choice but to just jump in and do it. And what he's talking about here is doing the engineering of what that would look like and updated costs, so that we can come back to you and talk about $3 million worth of project here.
What would the impact be on that? Like you said, Circuit 4 died if that happens to another circuit or multiple to customers around the town?
It wouldn't happen to everybody around the town. We'd be sitting here in the dark right now. Most of it is the old, closer to downtown areas and residential area and part of the downtown. Like I said, the east, the west side was converted, probably what, seven, eight years ago? It is on the 12-4. That's why when there's a outage, one half of downtown is out, the other half might not be out, vice versa. 12-4 is more reliable, it's got better protection equipment on it. And that is the standard, pretty much 7200, 12-4 is pretty much the standard.
It's also more efficient. 2400, which we use is 25 kVA transformer takes a primary amps of three times more than what, when you reduce it to a 72.
You raise your voltage, you lower your amps.
I guess Melanie?
I'm here.
Okay, some of this is eligible for financing, I would assume is that right?
The ultimate project, and even the engineering portion could be if we just sent it to temporary, no, the whole project. So we could, we could do that. And that's one of the things that I didn't talk about early on is they're presenting to you the total cost that they think these things will cost right now at this time. But even if you look at that financial summary that was on the front page, we have a lot of work to do to get this fund to the point where we're comfortable with that ending fund balance and some future discussions with you about rates. But more importantly, how are we going to finance a few of these things? Some of them are typical ongoing maintenance that you wouldn't want to finance anyway because they don't really have a true useful life to them. But some of them are, they do have a useful life attached and you do, you could feasibly finance those over a period of time that would help lessen that immediate burden.
And as, as, as you know, it doesn't make much sense to pay big projects out in cash at the expense of your reserves. And a number of years ago, last time we talked to you about a rate hike, one of the things the consultant told Dennis and I was that we got to the place where we were at because we, because we were paying in cash. Now, that's a good thing until it drops your reserves to a level where you don't want that, so.
Just like your home checking account. Any other questions I might be able to answer for you?
So one question is generally with for production. What have you guys seen from the solar, that was probably a few years ago? Are you guys proponents of solar, opponents to solar in terms of the generation?
Well, the solar we got now, it's only 15K, so we really don't
It's easy anyway.
Yeah, it feeds on the average two homes. Okay, so, and it goes right out on our distribution line and such. Proponent? It's been talked about, you know, five megawatts, I'm at the proximity part. Solar is a good thing, especially in the future when the prices of batteries go down. So you have kick-toilet storage, so you can use the solar all the time, not just when the sun's shining. So you have kick-toilet storage, so you can use the solar all the time, not just when the sun's shining. There is a small town in Kansas, Minneapolis, Kansas, that KPP is helping them put in a one-megawatt battery storage for try now. So I'm kind of interested to see, you know, that's cool.
Can't believe it's in Ottawa County.
Yes, it is.
Well, in the crux of any renewable, and we've talked about this before, is they're perfect when that energy source that powers them is available. They're, they're really good. And we have watched the curves on that little solar array that we have at the power plant and the curves are great, they're really great. And, and so are we a proponent of renewable energy of any kind? I think we all are. But we've just got to understand that it doesn't solve all problems. We cannot function without a certain amount of fossil fuels. It just doesn't happen. Even, even with the batteries, you know, it's not going to solve all the problems. But there are some reductions in it, there, there are some cost savings in it over time. The upfront cost is higher, you know, the, the long-term cost is lower, it's, you know, it's a trade-off.
There's no magic wand.
There is none.
Commissioners, any other questions for David, we'll wrap them on the electric production budget.
Thank you for making it, though.
Thank you.
I enjoy electricity.
That'll move us on to electric distribution.
Comes in. Watch out.
I tried putting this on.
I know. Any presentation after five is just.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Richard. I'm Ed Thompson, Electrical Distribution Superintendent. We're asking for an increase of one million, one hundred ninety-six thousand over the twenty-two budget. And it's largely due to increase in prices and need to replace some major issues. One of them is a bucket truck, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This bucket truck is fifteen years old. We used to be, when I started, we were on a ten-year plan to replace trucks because of a lot of things that's got changed. Due to our own shop, money-wise, we're, you know, not sinking a lot of money, labor into it, but we are having a little bit of price on the materials. It's the cost of the trucks being down. It was probably down for a period of one month total last year and it's already been out for a month this year. So as you can see, it just keeps getting worse and worse.
So you say how old was this current truck, did you say we've had?
Well, sixteen years old. And then the other major in the five fifty-eight is tree trimming, where I'm asking for an additional eighty thousand dollars to offset some of the, where we can't have time to trim trees, we can, we'll be doing our maintenance on our system.
So every tree you trim is one less problem for citizens during a storm.
I, I kind of did a little rough figure and you've probably seen in our packets every month, our overtime is probably seventy to seventy-five percent due to trees. And I think it was before COVID, I don't actually know the year, I think nineteen, we actually did some tree trimming, hired it out and you could see right offhand our overtime went down, which is a good thing. I mean, we all, all my guys and me, we are here to serve and we don't, you know, over time, we're glad to do it, but I don't think any of us really want to. I mean, it's something that we really don't want. And before I get too much into this, I would have a guy right here that helped me do this budget, but he is off serving our country right now, so just another. I mean, we've got some good people in the city, for sure. And then the GIS mapping, which is the Geographical Integrated System, that is kind of where all of our electric, well, not just electric, all of our utilities is, is on the map. Not only do we use the map and we're getting better, planning and code use the map when they're looking at new developments and everything like that. The last time that it flew over was, and took a picture of the town, was two thousand sixteen. So we have a lot of assets out there with no, no house to it or anything. It's just in a bare ground. So, and it just helps us all to see more where you're at when it's on there, so. And then twenty thousand for the outage map, which I think Dave talked about that a little bit. It's something, something that we can get started because of the AMI meters and we, we feel like we've got them spread out enough that this would help. And that's also to help get our customers back on and make sure we don't miss any of them that are out. The other big ticket item was in our transformer line. We got, I know of three Starbucks, Victory and Monoflow that will all be in this year, but due to everything everybody's heard, that we won't be getting any of them transformers till next year. We do have, we keep transformers in our warehouse inventory, so we'll be using one of them, but to replace them, we'll be out of the twenty-three budget. And I just got the quote back from Monoflow from Solomon and it was eighty-seven thousand dollars for the transformer.
The last one was what?
And the last one, which I think was, I don't know the year for sure, but it was thirty-seven thousand, so. Yeah, so, and that just keeps going up. I mean, I don't see no end in it right now. You'll see in a new deal, as the tornado sirens, we have always taken the maintenance for them out of our budget. Talking to Tom with Emerging Management, that we've got ten tornado sirens in town. Eight of them are old enough that he can't do what he wants to do to make it a better system. And we, it's just like anything else. I know some of, almost all of them were in before I started, which was twenty-two years ago, so. It's just a lot of things are getting past their prime.
Does he have access to any emergency preparedness funds out of the state to replace those?
He talked about that and a portion of it would be, but not all of it. And then the other one was the traffic signals, which they're the same way. They're just trying to get them replaced. We do have twenty-third street going in this year, supposed to be. And the problem is the cameras are all, they're up there, all old and not functioning properly. So there's another, I mean, I know we've been called out a lot on it. So we're going to go with a radar camera that actually does a better job and more efficient. But what we're looking for, for twenty-three is the traffic signals on Fifteenth Street and Seventh Street. And then we'll just try to work all the way downtown. The other big ticket item on our streetlights, and we're just concentrated on the ones over the bypass bridge right now. Two years ago, I got a bid to replace them. The wiring and the, and the poles, when I'm talking streetlights, the lights themselves, we have replaced almost all of them with LED. But for the poles and the wiring, all needs to be replaced. And as near as I can tell, I looked at the as-built plans for that bypass and they were in nineteen sixty-eight. And that's all the lights down that, through that whole stretch of town there on sixty-eight. But that two hundred fifty thousand dollars was just for the ones over the bridge.
Were both bridges or one bridge?
Just one, the bypass.
You may wonder why the state does that responsibility for those on the state bridge, so do we.
Yeah.
That was my question. Thank you for kind of an answer.
The best we know is that when, when they built that bridge, it was negotiated that we would take over those lights and then, and do the maintenance on, on the lighting. The state does everything else, they have nothing to do with the light.
And I will tell you that the wiring and conduit under the bridge is almost non-existent right now, so. All the boxes are nothing, they're all open now, nobody can get into them, but. But that doesn't mean they're not going to fall down, the whole wiring and everything, so.
And are we still missing a pole light?
We are. A light and a pole. Those are the ones we got in. I assume. Yeah, we actually got.
Did it go downriver? Is that what you're saying?
But just a little side note here, when we were preparing this, we kind of used our GIS system and looked things up and it was kind of interesting to me, although it's not a hundred percent accurate. We have over one hundred miles of line in town, one thousand and fifty-four overhead transformers, three thousand five hundred eighty, eighty-one poles, and that's just the ones that we have documented in GIS, that's not all of them. And I'm assuming there's probably around a hundred extra poles, secondary poles that are not in there, so.
Can you say with those new AMI meters, I'm assuming it speeds your overtime when you can look and see, someone calls in and says, my house has no power, you can look and see where is affected, know where to send a crew. So it's in the end, saving people money by updating these maps, hardly right?
Yeah, it, it does a few things, that, yes, and then the guys that are on call, we, we have two guys on call, they could look. If they know right away that, you know, there's stuff on that end of town and that end, then they might, they'll get another crew in here right away, which will help get everybody on faster. And the biggest thing for me is it leaves, it should help leave nobody, you know, we think we've got the power fixed, but there's still outages.
We can tell by the meter. And our end game, you know, it's, it's interesting to talk about our end game. We've been a while getting the AMI meters in, but eventually you won't have to call anybody. You'll be able to get on your battery-powered laptop and you'll be able to get into the system that we're talking about and, and you'll be able to know that, that you're out of power and that we know that and you're on the way. You'll get a message and alert right there on that same laptop over that system. And, and so, yeah, you won't have to call anybody, you'll, you'll know it's out. I know the lights are already out, but, but you'll, you'll know by your meter that, that you're out and that somebody's on the way.
Is that like app-enabled for your phone? So I was just thinking, my Wi-Fi would be down if I don't have power. So my laptop wouldn't be able to access the internet, just as a thought.
Yeah, just depending on, you know, where you're at and what you're doing, you know. If you've got satellite service at that point in time, yes, you'll still get, be able to get those, you know. On your phone, you'll be able to get those.
Well, that's my, end of my presentation. You got any more questions?
Commissioners, any other questions for Ed on the electrical distribution?
I guess that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, like you said, two years ago, any idea what that would be next year?
We had, I mean, to be honest, two years ago, we had a, it took me over six months to get a bid, just to get somebody to do it. I would estimate that it's probably going to be at least half again. Maybe double. But.
And as far as, and those lights were put in nineteen sixty-eight, I guess, is that when it was built? And all the conduit and everything, so. Long time ago.
All right. Thank you, Ed.
Yep.
That'll move us on to the warehouse budget.
Kurt's actually on vacation, we're right now, so.
Dennis, are you, do you want to go over that one?
Yeah.
Or, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we absolutely can. And, and quite honestly, this budget, there, there's really just a couple of things in this budget that, that are asking for some funds that are kind of out of the ordinary. This budget is really pretty cut and dry. The, the racking that, that they use to, to maintain inventory, keep the inventory organized in the warehouse, has been there since that warehouse was built. And so one of the requests is, I believe it's eighty-three thousand dollars or eighty thousand dollars to begin the process of, of replacing that racking and replacing the lighting along with the racking because of course, nothing's going to match up at that point in time. And then the other relatively large increase in there is a mower. We've backed off on doing a mower at the warehouse for the last two or three years. They're using a mower that came from the, the parks that I believe was a two thousand nine model with a lot of hours on it. It's still getting the job done, but we're always working on it, like everything else. You know, you're, the maintenance on it is, is getting bigger and bigger at that point in time. And then a little concrete work, with the concrete work, they actually started this year and just wanting to continue and kind of begin to finish up that, that concrete work outside the East Bay doors there at the warehouse. And the other things that I think that kind of gets.
Yes, it's elaborate, that the, the lighting is that we have, we put new lighting in there with LED bolt and some of the sections of bolt are starting to fail and there's no, can't, can't replace them. You'd have to replace the whole fixture, so timing of this with the, the racking would, would be, would make sense to get it all done, you know, put the racking in and put new lights in to get the proper lighting.
Commissioners, any questions on this budget?
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll move us on to utility administration.
It's the stormwater.
It's the stormwater, let's do that. Let's move on to stormwater.
So in the stormwater budget, as you all know, the stormwater utility is an assessed fee. And it's assessed to every property in the city. And that is the, the revenue stream, you know, that related to the stormwater utility. We've done a number of things over the last year. As you all know, we've had a process of about three different stormwater coordinators over about the last five years or so. The city manager and I made a decision this year that we were going to contract a piece of, of our stormwater, which we have done with one of our engineering groups. And then we do a, a few of the things related to the stormwater that everything ultimately comes down to that MS four permit that we're required to file every year. We, we are doing our inspections internally. We're doing some of the public education internally and meeting the requirements of that MS four permit in three or four different ways, three or four different factions. At this point in time, everything seems to be flowing pretty good, working like we would have hoped it would.
And that MS four permit is a big deal for the city a lot of them.
Absolutely is, yes.
And any city that has. At any city that has to have one.
Yeah. The funding, uh, in this, uh, particular budget, you will see shows a decrease, actually a fairly significant decrease. Uh, really that is related to the fact that we just are not planning projects for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we've had several conversations about the thirteenth to fifteenth Cedar project. That is a stormwater project that will be back to you here before too long, uh, for approval. And if, uh, if that is approved, uh, we're back to building our funds a little bit before we hit that next project.
And there are, this was also for maintenance. And Dennis knows that, uh, that can repair our inlands. There's work to be done on Skunk Run. So while there's no, there may not be any bonding projects, there are maintenance projects to be done in the basement.
Yeah, and then those are the things that, that we're taking a look at and to get that priority list, so to speak, put together. That's kind of it in a nutshell. If you have questions, be happy to answer.
And the other thing you all have to know about this fund is that there has, this is at the same level it was when it was adopted.
Yeah, and I, I think we're, we're going on like eight years now, uh, since this fund was established. And there, there have been no increases in, in the stormwater utility fund.
That was just when we were looking at hiring someone to manage this or something and we didn't.
Yes, yes, like I said, kinda at the outset there, we've gone through three different, uh, stormwater coordinators at position in about the last five years. And, um, we made a decision that, uh, instead of going and hiring another coordinator, that a number of those things are being done internally, like I talked about inspections and education and, and, uh, uh, some of those things. Uh, and then we contracted with an engineer, uh, at a not to exceed amount, uh, which we believe over the course of this next year, uh, is probably gonna save us money to what we were paying a stormwater coordinator. And assuming everything works and, and, and all of our, uh, analysis and, and, and those things that need to take place over the course of year are getting done, then, uh, it may be the way we move on down the road.
Commissioners, any questions for Dennis on the stormwater fund? Thank you, Dan.
I covered for you, man.
Thanks.
Do you have anything to say about utility administration?
I would say only if you have questions about that, it is just an administration budget. And then in addition to, we had the, did you guys cover broadband? I almost stopped for a second.
Come on up there. Paul's doing broadband, right? Okay. Commissioners, do you have anything, any questions for Ms. Landis about the utility administration? Don't believe so. Paul, you wanna come up with broadband?
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
Uh, the two thousand twenty-three broadband budget has no real increases except for any personnel or pool or merit adjustments that finance will calculate. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I might note that on the financial side of this, I think that in the past, there's always been a pretty balanced approach to the broadband utility from the revenue and expense perspective. But I think you'll start to see where at that point where we may start having more expenses than what we see in the revenue coming in with a fairly set number of customers, if I'm not mistaken, um, that produces a fairly set amount of revenue. And our, our expenditures are just now starting to creep past that point. So at some future point, um, we can talk more about the, uh, maintenance part of maintaining that broadband infrastructure, some of those expenditures. If we have any major things coming down the pipe.
So the history of this is that we started this, what, ten years ago? Ten years ago, this came out of a discussion with a number of other major, uh, broadband providers, our industrial partners were telling us that they weren't getting the options they needed to do what they needed. So we brought, we brought those partner, we brought the broadband partners to the table and were told they were not gonna do any upgrades. So the city of Shenute was the leader in having a broadband utility. And we talked to them and we started a broadband utility, not to be the highest, not to be the lowest. But the intent was to give our business community an option, an option. And that's why we have those twenty-three, uh, uh, partners. And we use the public broadband that exists in the city to a large extent.
Well, and keep in mind, we have been pretty blessed to the end that we have been able to train people internally. We maintain our own broadband system. We don't bring anybody in contractually between what our IT department can do and what our electric production, electric distribution crews can do. We do everything internally. So it's, it saves us considerably to what it would take to contract a lot of those jobs.
And I'm sure you already know this, but this is quite a feat to have this already in place. And, and, um, being able to maintain it at such a, a great level for those that do use it and have it as an option. Every, most every other community is struggling to even get something like this started and moving in the right direction. But this has been in place for a considerable amount of time. And it's, it's, uh, it was some great forward thinking, um, part of the city overall to put it in place. Just, I'm sure you've seen the struggles of everyone else, but it's definitely, definitely a challenge everywhere.
Does the twenty-three customers ebb and flow or is that?
You know, it moves up and down a little bit, but not a lot. There's, there's a select clientele really that can take advantage. Because what we're giving them is just bare internet, no firewall, no, they need some IT support on the other side, which it probably is another need in this community. It's just some roving IT people walking around helping people. But they, it's, it's not like your AT&T home wifi or something. It, it takes some expertise on the other side as well, so. And so it stays pretty steady because there's not a lot of turnover at that level around town.
But I'm glad you explained that because there might be some people listening that are like, hey, why can't I get on the city's, you know, internet if they have it?
It's, it's, the, our lowest, smallest customers require the most resources usually. I don't, I mean, resources by some extra help here and there, you know.
It's only in certain parts of town, right, too? I mean, it's strictly.
That's the first question, because I'll get a call and, and say, where are you? You know, and if we're close, then hopefully we can work something out. And if we're not, then we would have to build out quite a ways.
Yeah, we started out with the North Industrial Park and that's all wired, broadband out there. And, um, between Dennis's department and Paul's, Proximity Park also has broadband out there. So we're ready, we're, we're ready for that when we get our first, um, uh, project up.
Well, and keep in mind, from north to south, we have a broadband trunk that, that covers the whole community. Now, not so much east to west, but north to south, you know, we, I guess in essence, you could say we run completely down Main Street from north to south. Not exactly.
We're much closer to everyone than we were when we started.
And then we still cover the schools.
Yes.
So that's a nice thing that, yes, everything that goes on at the schools through this, or mostly.
It's not, I, I don't believe the city is covering the schools.
No, 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 they're a client of ours.
Yes, yeah. Well, and, and it's a gig, it's the gigabyte service, you know, that people couldn't get from, from other entities that, that was being required, that, that we're able to provide. And like Paul said, it's just, it's just that, it's gigabytes. But they couldn't get it anyplace else.
We always see this as an economic development tool and really just a retention tool, too. I mean, we would lose, we would lose businesses if they couldn't have the internet that they needed.
Yeah, they need that availability, whether it be from us or someone else, they need that availability.
But Melanie's absolutely correct. I mean, across the state, their municipalities are screaming for help.
And we're set up for Proximity Park too, correct?
Yes, we have, yeah, the, every, all the poles that we put up with electric on them also have fiber on them.
So another amenity that we can offer.
There's, there's a hundred and forty-four strand fiber out there, I believe. So, yeah, yeah, they, plenty of access.
Commissioners, any other questions on broadband? Don't believe so. Thank you, Paul.
I might mention, just to wrap up the electric utility, with the other utilities I've told you about, the transfers that are made from that fund as well. Um, I might just mention that this does support, um, a portion of the Community Services Fund, which you heard about earlier, a portion of the Risk Management Fund. Um, it does make a transfer to the general fund and it, and also pays for, um, its current outstanding debt. So it transfers upon an interest fund of about one point one million dollars there. Do you have any questions on those transfers? Thank you so much.
Thank you. That'll move us on to comments by our city manager. Comments by our city commissioner, Commissioner Kayler?
None at this time.
Commissioner Clay?
None at this time.
Mayor Perkins, give me one. We wait here first. Did you say no comment?
You pulled a joke in there earlier, the whole.
All right. Never shake hands with a left-handed gunslinger. Think about it. Just your advice for the day.
That'll be, uh, comments by, comments by, Mayor, I have none to follow up on that. So our announcements, uh, our May thirtieth, uh, study session has been canceled. And I apologize because I thought that would be on our May thirtieth. It'll be on the following, um, study session for, uh, Main Street. And then we have our June first regular meeting at seven PM here and a study session at June sixth. Uh, anything else come before the commission? No?